Everybody present, we can, we can begin. We'll call the order of the Gladstone City Commission Regular Meeting of January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, which will hopefully be a better year than last year. First up, we have the invocation. Anybody want to give an invocation? Brad? Up for an invocation?
Well, I'd lead that to our mayor to start off the year with an invocation, but.
I could, I can do it. Heavenly Father, bless us as we gather to conduct the business of the city of Gladstone. Help us to make good choices that are fair and impartial and benefit all of the city of Gladstone. Amen. Next up, we have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty. Roll call.
Mayor Thompson. Commissioner Akala. Commissioner Akala.
Hello.
Hi Judy. Commissioner, that's okay. Commissioner Hunter.
Here.
Commissioner Mantala.
Here.
Commissioner Stazinski.
Here.
And if you could all acknowledge for the record that you're attending via Zoom within Gladstone, Michigan, if you are, or where you're located.
Aye.
Kitchen table.
Aye.
Gladstone.
It's part of the open meetings requirement, so thank you.
We have no public hearings, so first will be a public comment. If anybody would like to publicly comment, now would be the time. Don't forget to unmute if you want to comment. Looks like we have nobody for public comment. The consent agenda, the city commission special meeting minutes of December fourteenth, the city commission regular meeting minutes of December fourteenth, the city of Gladstone Board of Review of December fifteenth, and the city payment of bills. Questions or comments on any of those?
As you can see on the payment of bills, all the, all the bills were for for equipment and services associated with the Saw Grant. The cellar instrument, that was for a couple of trembles, new trembles for locating GIS coordinates. And the tunnel vision pipeline services. This was for cleaning and and filming. Wasn't just cleaning and they did a lot in the storms because our storms, our vector truck, we haven't really done a lot in the storms, especially with the high water right now. There's so much water flowing through them. And the last, the last bill, the Bell Equipment, that was actually, I know if you read the invoice, it's hard to understand what it is, but it's actually a new head on for cleaning the sewers for the, for the back to truck. Is there any other questions?
I would make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it's published in the, in the packet. I have a motion by myself, or by Commissioner Akala to approve the consent agenda. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, under new business, we have the Great Lakes Credit Union request for land.
Did you want to take this one here or you want me to?
I can. You guys, can you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so before you, you have the staff report that we put together and the GIS map of the parking lot, or we don't call it a parking lot, we call it kind of a through fair between the whatever bar and the Great Lakes Federal Credit Union. And the credit union approached us quite a while ago, about a year ago, I think, and had talked to us about that area and what we were thinking about doing with it. The DDA had embarked in a, a parking study in that area, so we were holding off and they weren't quite ready to make any decisions yet either Great Lakes. And so we did get the parking studies results back and we reviewed those in conjunction with Great Lakes requests, but they have requested that lot from us. It is twenty-six feet wide by a hundred and forty feet long. It's currently used just, I use it just to get to the alley and then to go around the building, but they do use it, well, they don't, it's not designated, but some people do park there and run into the credit union. Their interest in it is that they are trying to do an expansion project, not in the near future, well, in the near future, but within a couple of years. And they would utilize that space to help them meet the goals for their expansion. One of the things that we made very clear with them is that they are, they're an iconic business in our downtown that, that draws a number of stops by people, post offices and credit unions and banks are good businesses to have in your downtown because people make a quick stop there and then they run across the street and do something else and hopefully stay in our downtown for a little bit. So we definitely have a strong interest in keeping them in our downtown and hopefully at that location. The whatever bar came first, came up for sale in the midst of conversing with Great Lakes and they are in the process of securing that property. Also, they're not a hundred percent certain what they are going to do with that property, but that if they can secure the Gladstone piece of that property, the whatever bar, then in addition to what they currently own, will greatly open up the avenues for what they can consider at their location. So that is where we're at, and so the proposal is before you to consider allowing us to transfer this property to them in some form. I didn't put down, there's not an offer on the table from Great Lakes. They are willing to, they have offered and said they don't expect it for free. I did have the assessor give us a fair market value on that and she came up with about three thousand dollars is what property that size in the downtown is going for. It is paved and so it would remove some burden from the city, I guess, in maintaining it and plowing it. And in talking with all of the department heads, it does help support some of the parking issues that we have in that area if we were to get rid of it. One, it would open up some parking for Great Lakes. And it would also be to utilize better if Great Lakes does keep, if Great Lakes secures the bar and keeps those apartments above the bar, it does provide them with some different access or use for parking for the tenants there. We didn't see any downfall to it, and so that's why our recommendation was that we consider that transfer. I'll let you guys talk about it. And I know that Wayne Johnson, I think he's on, I can't see everybody, but he said he was going to be on tonight if we had any questions for him. And then I can go into the recommendation a little further, depending on where your conversation goes.
That property really isn't big enough for anything else, is it? You couldn't really build on it, or, I mean, it's not even big enough to make a parking lot.
It's not, it's not big enough for the city ourselves to make it a parking lot because it's, it's only big enough for one direction. As it stands, as it is alone, it's, it's it's pretty useless to us except for the way that it stands as a through fair. It does get you back to the, the post office drop box so that you're going the right direction. That, I think that's what most people use it for.
Yep. Yeah, it's only of value to either of the properties on either side of it, really.
If we did transfer it to the credit union, of course, then it would go on their tax roll, which they are a taxpayer in the city.
Renee, I have just one little question. Don't we have a kind of a policy that we sell a piece of property or transfer a piece of property that they have to build on it within eighteen months?
Right. So if, if you did.
Yeah, and their timeline said twenty twenty-three. Are we going to have to make an exception or amend that somehow? If this, if this happens?
Right, so that, that would be some follow-up discussion. What, what Great Lakes is basically looking for right now is a commitment that the city would consider selling it so that they can move forward with purchasing that whatever bar property. And so if, if you were in favor of it, what I would recommend is that we create what I'm calling a purchase agreement with them. And probably the sale wouldn't take place until they are within a closer timeframe to building, but it would give them some assurances that yes, we're committed to selling them the property and that we would reserve that right to sell it to them or that they would have that right to sell it or purchase or transfer, whatever, whatever you guys decide.
So it's sort of like the first right.
For something like that, I mean, moving forward with improvements downtown, I think are what we're always looking to do. Have a bigger, I think that's just a plus.
And then moving the, the drive-through to the west side, that's going to open two or three spots on Delta Avenue where it's always, it's always really busy, a couple of spots anyway, right between the credit union and the post office.
Renee, is, is the credit union looking at expanding their building as a whole or just mainly expanding their parking?
So they are looking at expanding the building also. They have a couple of different options on the table. The, the one that they're favoring the most is expanding currently right now where their, their drive-through is, they would expand that direction and bring that, where the drive-through is, they would bring that right out to where the property line is. And then they would move the drive-through to the other side of the building, so it would give them a bigger footprint of the inside of the building. And then in addition, completely rearrange that drive-through. And then finally, it would then allow them to do some different things with parking than they currently are doing. The whatever bar is still up in the air with what they can and want to do. I'm working with them to try to consider not tearing down the whole thing, but leaving some of it for rental space, that kind of thing. Initially, they were thinking tear the whole thing down and build something completely different. But in talking with them, it seems like it's a better option to maintain some of that space over there and they may use it for a part of their business, so maybe the loans and other things that they do that are more office-based would be located over there. They, they're tossing around a bunch of options at this time, but for their own building, the way it stands, the, the, the best solution they found is to build out on the, on the drive-through side and then add a new drive-through on the other side.
Okay. I was just curious, I was just going from what Brad was saying about the eighteen months of building. Obviously, on this one, I, I don't think it's an, an empty lot. It is an empty lot, but it's not big enough to be built, building anything, but.
And the reason, the reason they're approaching us now is because that whatever bar is for sale and they don't want to miss that opportunity. And they, they would build sooner, they've been talking about it, but they've got some big program change that they are doing within their, or systems change and how they handle money in their, in their coming through for the credit union and they figure that that's going to take a good year for them to get through just that process. So they're being realistic and saying, you know, it's just not going to happen within that eighteen months, but I did tell them it was still worth bringing to you because you, you know, you can work with that and make an exception if you choose to.
Are they planning on blocking off the drive-through at all until they start developing anything? I mean, would the public still have access there?
With their current thought, they're thinking they could leave the drive-through open and build on the other side of the building first and then have the drive-through ready and then start on the other side.
Yeah, I know you said that, but I'm talking about right now, if we say we're in favor of this, would they still leave the dry, you know, the thoroughfare?
Oh, I get what you're saying. So if, if we decided to move forward with giving them some sort of assurance to, that they could purchase, I think it would just remain the same until they actually, you know, secured the property and it became theirs. It would still be, my, my suggestion is we still keep, we keep it in our name, but it would, like Eric had mentioned, maybe it would be like a first right of refusal or something like that. But coming up with something a little more sure that yes, we're willing to, to sell and, you know, we'll give you a two-year timeline or whatever it is to consider, you know. If, if all goes well tonight, I would say if you said yes, we would consider selling, I would put maybe a two-year timeline on it and say we would consider it within the two years and allow Eric then to enter into some form of agreement that secures that.
That makes sense.
That, that eighteen months would start from the day to the closure of the sale, correct?
That's what I would recommend, yes.
I mean, until it's their, yeah, until it's their land, they can't do anything anyway, right? So I would think the clock would start at the time they close, so we, we could, we could give them the confidence they need that we would be willing to sell it to them, but we could time the closing with their purchase of the whatever bar. And if that falls through and they want to change their plan, then they're not sitting on this piece of property as well, you know. Does that make sense?
It does, and, and they did say that even if the whatever bar fell through, even if they could just secure our property, they could do what they need to do, but they want, they wanted to try to secure both.
Okay.
Just, they do have a backup plan for that.
I just have a couple, couple last things. This has nothing to do with any type of a DDA master plan as far as keeping that a through fair for the alley to access the post office, nothing like that, correct?
No, it doesn't interfere with any of that.
That's, I figured that. And the other part of it is, I'm not, I'm, I'm not really concerned about the eighteen months or even give them an extension because realistically, that piece of property, the way it's set up now, you, you couldn't build on it anyway. The only thing you could do is obviously if somebody were to buy independently, it's not with the credit union or the whatever bar, you're never going to be able to build on it, but you'd be able to expand either one of those two businesses, and obviously the whatever bar is up for sale or making it an access to the parking lot. So I'm not really hung up if we do decide to, to go through with a selling of that piece of property that this is being held at an eighteen-month standard just because you couldn't build anything to sign that piece of property loan anyway.
I, I agree with that, Darren. Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's just sitting there idle anyway, right? It's a short post office right now. So with the, with the parking study, you said there really isn't a concern with parking like along this block? And, and my thought was if, you know, if they picked up this, this lot in between and that, and that suffices for what they need for the bank, would there be any benefit to the city putting a lot in, a parking lot where the whatever bar is? If that came down and if that deal didn't work out for the bank?
Well, we're, we're looking at options for the parking study. This is the area where it's, it's a little bit too far, too far to the, I guess it would be the.
Left center corner.
And the, the area that we're looking for more parking is a little bit further east where we're having the true problems, but this, this little parking, this little through fair that we have there doesn't really resolve any of those issues for us either as it stands alone. It would have to be combined with something else. And if we look at whether or not it's more beneficial to keep Great Lakes Credit Union in the downtown or free up some parking in an area that isn't really having an issue, I would say the scale tips towards keeping Great Lakes in the downtown and, and looking for parking somewhere else to satisfy the DDA issues. And we, we've been talking about some different, you know, ideas. I hate to hold up, you know, expansion and keeping their, their business in the downtown for, you know, a small, small area that might, if we were to utilize that, we might be able to get, you know, just a couple spaces out of it. It's just not the ideal location for the, for the DDA issues that we're having. So I would, in summary, say it doesn't hinder anything is in relation to the DDA parking study, but we wanted to make sure that we reviewed the parking study information before we came to that conclusion because it just isn't in the target area that we're shooting to get more parking.
That's all I have. I think you did a nice job, Renee.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. That, that definitely makes sense and I guess to word it in a motion, I think we should, we should allow Eric to draft a purchase agreement with Great Lakes First Federal Credit Union for purchase of that lot and have the sale contingent upon that purchase agreement coming back to the city commission for final approval.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stazinski, support by Commissioner Hunter. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Thanks, Renee. Next up, we have the
the March border review.
Looks like Joe got muted.
Who muted me? Looks like we, next up on the agenda is the March Board of Review alternate meeting dates. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
As you can see, if you read through the board review and assessing officers' letter from the Department of Treasury, there's specific days when we can have the border review. And if we can't have it on the month, the second Monday in March, we need to have a resolution to move it to a different day. And because Janice is a contracted employee, she has a couple other entities that she has to do border review. And she was gonna do her other two townships on Monday and Tuesday. And that would reserve Wednesday and Thursday for the city. So what, what we need is to have a resolution to what is it? To alter the start dates of the March border review to Wednesday, March tenth, twenty twenty-one.
You need a resolution or just a motion?
Well, if you read the the letter from Treasury, it, it states, it's the appeal meetings of the March Board begin on the second Monday in March. Local units can set an alternate start date for the appeal meetings by adopting a, an ordinance or resolution. But that alternate start date can only be the Tuesday or Wednesday of that same week.
Okay, so are you going to prepare a resolution for the next meeting then? I mean, we don't have a resolution in hand is what I'm saying.
Yeah. That is what we are going to do. We didn't catch this till about a half hour ago. The wording of the we realized it was this formal in order to change this, so we will, we'll do that.
I'll make a motion and we table the, the changing of the dates when the resolution is prepared and presented to the commission at the next meeting.
Support. A motion by Commissioner Hunter, support by Commissioner Stazinski, I believe, to table this till the next meeting and we'll have a resolution to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Kim, was that the right thing to do? I just, I just shoot it out there.
Yes, that's fine. I think we have to have it in by the end of January, so the next meeting would be January twenty-fifth, if I'm correct on that. So yes, that's good.
Okay, I didn't have a chance to talk to you from when I, I caught that in the, in the readings. If you, if the commissioners have a chance to read through this letter that came from the state, it has a lot of information regarding the disabled veterans exemption and the poverty exemption and it's really quite educational, so I recommend the reading.
Next up on the agenda, we have the drinking water asset management, DWA grant application information.
Yeah, the state made available that something, something to do with that something to do with, with COVID funding, they made available this grant for for drinking water, similar to the Saw Grant, except that this is a hundred percent reimbursable and and because of new lead copper laws, we had to have a good inventory of all our lead lateral lines and lead service lines and so it, this came about after the last commission meeting and because it, it had to be mailed in before January first, I asked Rob to take care of this and work this up, so we could, we could get on the list anyway. So this is actually for information only, but we have applied for this grant.
Great. Any questions or discussion?
We stand a good chance of getting it?
It sounds like we do. It's, we do get some equipment out of it. They'll be getting a new computer. And we have a few blocks where we're not really sure on the makeup of of, of the laterals and service lines, so they will do some hydro excavating and to identify what the make of those lines are and also we'll, we get a we'll get some GIS work and we'll get an inspection of our million gallon reservoir that's up on the block that was built in the nineteen thirties.
When was, when was the last time we were in that reservoir?
Usually go in it every couple of years. It's built out of concrete. It's it's one of those things. It's one of those things that is like the Colosseum in Rome. It's going to be there After we're all gone.
That's good. All right, next up, we have the Liquor license on leased golf course. Agenda item.
So this is, this is mine again. Tracy Thompson is, as you guys are all aware. There, he's looking to transfer the liquor license associated with the Oaks. And in order to do this, he stated that he needed proof that he has permission from the city of Gladstone to provide liquor in an outdoor service area. I did contact the state and confirm that One, how we go about doing that and and two, you know, looking into Exactly what that meant and what it entailed. So what I did find out is that he's looking For sales on the golf course and because we own that, they, they need what they call written permission from the city. And so I am asking that you allow the city clerk to submit a letter to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Allowing the sale of liquor on the golf or allowing those sales and consumption of alcohol on the golf course. This isn't new. We've been doing that all along, but it is just coming up because of the transfer of ownership. And I know that we are going into closed session later on regarding other issues with the Oaks. But we feel comfortable that this, this is not any different than what we have been doing and it will be something That needs to be completed either way.
We, we, we have no Reason to deny that. I mean, we have no Right to deny this really, right? I mean, we can't.
Well, I, I guess you know, could deny if you wanted to, but we've been allowing it. You are requiring the liability insurance and that kind of thing, so that will, that will cover. But that's what the state requires because it is not. He can't get a license for that property because it is, it's, it's in our name.
So in, like, so he has The, has shown proof of the insurance?
I believe that is in the packet that we
Or can he not get insurance until, I mean?
No, I think he has the liability insurance. I think that was in the packet that we had received from Don Bacon. Was that last month? I can't remember the date.
Was it? Okay, okay.
He has to go through all the regular liquor control commission safeguards that are in place for
Yep.
Any alcohol license.
This is just a little bit different than we've seen in the past because usually we get a form and it comes from public safety and they, they present it to you. This was a little, I don't know if the liquor licensing is doing it differently now. That's why I called on it to see, you know, what do you need? Why is this different? And she said this is their process, so I'm, we're following what the state is requesting.
Does this include the patio area behind? Behind the bar, Renee?
He didn't ask for that, but I was going to include any area that is currently owned By the city, just to make sure that it covers. You know, him and us and liability issues. So I was going to include the golf course. And the patio. Area.
Go ahead and finish.
I was just going to say that depending on what we Decide later, if we come to a decision, we may expand or shrink those areas depending on What we decide to do with the rest of the property tonight, later tonight.
So the patio area belongs to the city?
Yes, it does.
I believe at this time it all does, but so, so this, you know, this letter has to specifically name Tracy Thompson as Or, or his LLC, right, as the, the party that Is in a lease agreement with the city and has permission to sell alcohol, right? City property, right? So if we're gonna If we're gonna put that letter together, wouldn't it make sense to do that after we have a lease agreement with him? Which we currently don't. And then the, the things you mentioned that we may want to change as far as the areas that are included or not or whatever that I mean, that, we wouldn't have to change it, right? We would know exactly what we're doing.
It could change. It could change. I know Tracy's been waiting patiently. And I did promise that we would try to get this resolved as best we could tonight. I think, I, I understand what you're saying and I think maybe what we could consider is And Kim, I'm not sure if we can do this. Can we table this until after the discussion tonight? And maybe revisit it if we have some decisions?
Think, I think we have to make a decision tonight. We shouldn't hold up Tracy any. It's common practice on a golf course, people come and they pay for their green fees and then they, they buy A few beers and a portable cooler and they put it on. So this is just giving them permission to Have a couple cocktails out on, out on the golf course while they're golfing.
This, this wouldn't be really any different than allowing somebody to have a liquor license in the park.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of the same thing. And, and you don't lease the park.
So could this be contingent that we could pass, make a motion to To allow for this contingent upon the outcome of our closed session decision? So that way it doesn't have to go on to the next meeting or not?
Yes, you could table it till after your closed session when you resume back into open session by a motion and support. You could do that.
And then revisit it after that for tonight could still be done, right?
Right, when we come back out of closed session and we're, we're called back into open, then we could take up this, this agenda item.
Okay.
I, I think that's a great idea. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we table it till after closed session.
I'll support.
A motion by Commissioner Stavinsky, supported by Commissioner Hunter to table this until after the closed session. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? The motion is carried. That brings us up to the next agenda item, which is the First, we're going to go through the city managers' report.
I didn't have a whole lot tonight. I had, it was nice to have Some time off. I had during Christmas and New Year's off and had spent time with my daughter and Had a nice Christmas and that was good. And we got back and we're diving into budget right now, so That's what we'll be working on for the next couple of months. That's all I have.
Eric, really quick, did you get a chance to watch the Spartans during that timeframe, that three game losing streak? I'm just curious.
Yes, and I watched them lose in the last second the other night.
Sorry, that's going to be earlier comment.
They're, they're growing.
Any city commission or committee reports? Border commission reports, anybody? City commissioner comments?
Just a couple of things, you know, back to last year. The house decorating contest, I wanted to touch base on that since that was after our last meeting of the year. It's an excellent turnout with that. We had twenty five participants. We've got some very competitive house decorators in this town. It, it was, it was hard to judge if you, if you did do the judging, it was hard to, it's hard to pick You know, hard to give them all points, you know, the point system one to five is kind of hard to pick the, the best ones because they're all really good. But I would like to congratulate Sarah Harris for winning that. They did an excellent job over on Superior and Other than that, just like to wish everyone a happy new year. It's kind of went off to a crazy start already, but Hopefully it's going to calm down a little bit and be better than this past year was.
Thanks, Greg. Commissioner Akala?
Just apologize for my dog's barking and you know how that goes if you're a pet owner. So I went into a different room and no guarantee that they're not going to be scratching at this door, but Once again, wish everyone that they had a happy holiday and continue in good health for the rest of this year and in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Just another, just echoing what everybody has said earlier already as far as how the holidays went. It was nice to be with family and friends. Gladstone looked really nice. I liked the downtown. All the lights were really a nice added bonus to everything and Hopefully this new year, you start out a little bit crazy. Hopefully it kind of settles down and we can get back to some normalcy.
Thanks, Darren. Commissioner Mantala?
Glad to see everybody at, at the meeting tonight and everybody's healthy and Made it back from their holiday travels if you did so and looking forward to just getting back to kind of a regular routine here.
Thank you. I don't have any comments for this evening. Next up would be the city clerk comments.
I don't have anything for the clerk updates or anything, but I do On behalf of the city, send out our condolences to Madeline Trikas's family as she passed away Earlier this month. She was their dispatcher for public safety for many years, so fabulous lady. So our condolences.
Thanks, Kim.
Yep.
Next up, we have the closed session.
I would need a motion and support.
I would make a motion that we entered into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute as allowable under the Open Meetings Act. Two sixty seven of nineteen seventy six, section eight, item H. Or We get a rule call vote?
Who did the support on that one? I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Akala?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Mantala? Commissioner Mantala?
Yes.
Commissioner Stavinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes. We're now entering into closed session.
So those of you that will be joining us in closed session, you will be moved to another room that is just for the commissioners and those That are participating in the closed session and then we will return to our regular Zoom meeting.